It's time.
It's time.
So much for the work session. Let's begin the board meeting first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So used to box not writing, I don't pay. Okay. Today I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes from September 5th, 2024, and September 19th, 2024.
I'll move that. I've read them all today. Interesting.
Were there any additions, deletions, corrections?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Public comments.
Mary Ann Williams, Greater Baldwinville Chamber of Commerce. Taste to Beville is done. Went very well. Thank you to the various village departments that helped us put on the event. DPW chief mayor Jody for being great with paperwork. Trustee Freilu, trustee Collins, thank you for coming out and working with us with your wives that day. It was hot, but it was a good day. So, thank you all. Something coming up. We have our trick-or-treating event on Saturday, October 26th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Any business or organization can sign up to hand out candy, hoping that the police department and village government, maybe both, will participate. Last year, I kind of love the library, they kept count. They gave out 300 pieces of candy. So it's become a very popular event. I've got already at least two dozen groups signed up. So think about it. Thanks.
What date was that?
Saturday, October 26th.
In what time?
2:00 to 4:00 p.m.
I needed volunteer, but I spent a lot of money on food and it was delicious.
Thank you.
And the fans were good and everything looked great and it was a good time. You guys did great.
Thank you.
And we got some surprising feedback from people just walking up and saying, "This is the best thing I've been to in this village forever. It's fabulous. Please do it again." It was good.
Did you say we've been through it for five years?
Fifty Jim Sally? The mic, open mic, no?
Jim? Oh, James.
He was going one, two, three.
I just wanted to add on a little bit of what I talked about last week, when trustee Shepherd had said, you know, Market Beville was much more crowded. I'm like, "That's a once-a-year event." And the crowd in on the sidewalk, it seems to me, I'm not an expert, maybe the lawyer knows, but if that much of the sidewalk is blocked off that people have to hold a single file and there wouldn't be enough chair for like some wheelchairs and strollers and stuff, wouldn't that be a violation of disability?
ADA requires a three-foot clearance.
Right, well, there's...
Five foot in the village.
But not by ADA?
No, but by, I was going to mention this a little later, while we're discussing this. In all of our overlay districts, there's a paragraph entitled encroachments. And it does say that within public property on sidewalks, you can have awnings, tables, chairs, umbrellas, bollards, and other temporary furnishings for outside dining or decoration, and A-frame signs that may encroach over the public sidewalk, provided that a five-foot unobstructed corridor is maintained for pedestrians.
It's the unobstructed part, sorry.
Yes. And then, if someone wants to put a sign out, they can obtain a permit from the codes officer, maintaining that they can put something there, but that it will remain unobstructed. But that's in all of our overlay districts. And of course, the main one is the four corners, but it's in the other ones as well.
Sally, just so you know, Susan's meeting was over last week. I walked over there and I could not agree with you more. It is absolutely an issue.
That's what...
I was wondering, because I'm envisioning it, that boy, there's plenty of room, but when I physically went and looked at it, you're lucky if there was 20 inches.
Right.
And you were lucky if you could get a stroller through there.
Right.
So it's something that we've talked about a little bit, and something's going to be done. It's just a matter of what is going to be done.
I just was concerned because...
You're not wrong at all. Sorry, I appreciate it.
I'm not the biggest person in the world, but I feel kind of squishy.
Trust me, I would have had a turn sign myself to get through there.
And my concern is like, even though I'm not in a wheelchair, I'm aware of people who are in wheelchairs. And I feel like, yeah, they may not be on the sidewalk right then, but they should have the freedom to access it without undue hardship.
How does that work if the state makes the infrastructure?
That's what we're discussing. Because we gave the five-foot rule, that sank him in after the fact.
Right.
So we're kind of trying to figure out how it's going to...
State's going to tell you that they're moving it right away. Yeah, that's what they're going to say, you know.
Right, but do you go back to...
Correct me if I'm wrong. You had to ask them.
Saying, "If the state did this, you have no control over it?"
Chuck, they could get, they could plow the sidewalks when they first put the signs.
Yeah. We had to move a bunch of signs when they first put them up. This sidewalk, plowing it down through there.
But, I mean, one idea would be there's frontages that are closed, you know, when they're putting the sidewalks out, and maybe they could talk to the people, because it's a public sidewalk. But it's just that it's...
The one facility, they could do a better job of locating tables. We took the planter away.
Took one of them.
BG1, I haven't any, when I look at that, I don't know. Maybe they go around by the fire escape instead.
Well, I think when they first started putting, they just had their little, little round tables with one chair on either side. I don't think they had a liquor license, so it was like they were literally, you know, what's that?
Just like a coffee shop.
Two feet.
Like a coffee shop.
Yeah. And then, but then once they wanted to serve liquor out there, then they had to have the barrier, which then puts it out another however many feet. So, and I don't know if we considered all of that when...
No, it's hard, because we like seeing the activity, we like seeing the businesses thrive. Yep. Don't want to, certainly don't want to create an obstacle.
It's just ironic that the places that have the tables out are generally the places that has the obstructions on the sidewalk. You know, there's other places that have zero obstructions, but there's no tables. So, I mean, I don't know. But things...
We definitely have our eye on it.
That's...
It might not, you know, the outdoor seating season is coming to an end, so by next year we'll have to...
So we have time to work this out.
Think of a solution that will work for everyone.
Yeah. I just...
Who will end up designing where they can put a table? The picture, Mike went over and took pictures, as he said that night. The tables were set in one place, and some individual had taken a chair and sat at the end of the table.
Yes.
There's no way.
That's why we were just like that.
And I also think when we first gave them the permission, and we knew it was a tight squeeze, that the barrier was much closer to the tables, and their staff actually worked from outside of the barrier. So there wasn't necessarily the, you know, two, three-foot walkway within the inside of the barrier.
There would only be empty seating for two.
Yeah.
I think that's going to be part of the answer.
This way, not this way.
Certainly got the community compliant, although we lost something that we're not...
Thank you, Sally.
We're not ADA compliant, obviously we'll put out other communities. It's annoying.
I mean, the one good thing is those barriers are movable, so I would hope that if needed, someone would come and move the barriers so that a wheelchair or a stroller could get through. But they shouldn't have to ask, yes. I agree.
When you're in a wheelchair, you have a lot of obstacles in your life.
Yes.
And asking for help shouldn't have to be part of your day.
I agree.
Actually, worse to me this week.
Well, I'll tell you what, looking at the pictures again, you're right, that the barrier that they have used to be right up against the side of the table. And I'm looking at this picture here, there's probably an additional two feet between the barrier and the tables. So, great, they're going to gain two more feet, which means they're probably only a foot and a half short, because they're still not going to get five feet.
Okay, where does the five feet come from then? Why do we do...
That was just a discussion at the time. It was a discussion among the board members on the planning board at the time that the overlay districts were created. The overlay districts are additional rules that are put on top of our zoning map, so that in R1 district, or a business district, or whatever, you have rules about certain things. But in the overlay districts, and most, and actually this came from the former chairman of the planning board, the four corners overlay district is the most restrictive, because you talk about the architecture, the window situation. And as I say, at the time that that was discussed, and it was determined among the board members, it was determined at that time that obstruction provision be put into all of the overlay districts to make sure, and then again, this was about the time that people were talking about outside eating and so forth, and whether they needed certain permits, wanted to be sure that if you have tables outside, you've got five feet walkway so that you're not blocking pedestrians from walking down the sidewalk.
How the business that wanted outdoor seating, it might have caused this, and therefore couldn't do it, and never pursued it since then.
It could be. I don't know where the exact five feet, it could very well be to the time everybody looked at what all the municipalities were doing and came up with five feet. But it was part of that discussion that came up at the time, and a lot of that was done in combination with the then-chairman of the planning board and the village board.
So they decided to make it more restrictive than the ADA's inquiry?
Yeah, just they thought that...
Why did that extra two feet?
Well, at the time, I think it was just they felt that having it too close to the street would might hinder, I could say, like wheelchairs, things like that, going up and down. Again, I can't remember offhand why it was specifically five feet, but that's what they determined at the time.
And if that's not the right number, what's the procedure for change?
Well, you'd have to adopt a local law to amend those three or four sections.
Okay, moving on to trustees' comments. I was going to go to trustee Ryan, obviously he seems to be busy, so I don't...
Okay, well, since Jim Dale is not here tonight, I expected him here tonight, to just remind everybody that a week from tonight is Ghouls Night Out at Baldwin Canal Square, and it's going to be an awesome party. And then on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday next week, the 11th, 12th, and 13th, is the Ghost Walk, and that should be very exciting and scary, hopefully. And tickets are available from the Baldwinville Center for the Arts online. And that's it. He still needs volunteers. Yeah, we do need volunteers. So if anybody out there is willing and ready to help, please contact us. You can contact Jim Dale, Baldwinville Center for the Arts, we're on Facebook, and, you know, just let us know, because, you know, we need the help. Thank you, Bruce.
Nate?
Last Sunday, what was it, the 20th, right, the day after the Taste of Beville, I don't know what day of the week it was, but we had a series of, or a set of village residents come over and kind of beautify the area between the Silver Fox and the post office around the fence line. And I think it turned out pretty good, right, Bruce?
Turned out better than I thought.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't know there were...
Well, we ran into those trees, I thought we could stop. We wanted, we did, we did a lot more than I thought to as well. Did notice that there was a couple of jugs of oil that were in there, so that was pretty interesting. But I just want to thank you all of those volunteers for doing that. That was big help. And outside of that, stick with it, yeah.
I heard feedback that the owner of Silver Fox was impressed.
Yeah.
And is going to look at who owns that, because if he owns it, he's going to speak to his landscaping company.
All right.
About why they've been taking care of it.
Yeah, yeah.
For dumping the oil there.
Yeah, they changed the oil.
Well, it's, it might be good oil, who knows?
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
Thank you, and thank you, the DPW guys, because we cut more stuff than fit in the trucks, so we left stuff on the ground that they had to deal with.
Yeah, we apologize for that huge tree that had all those like, it wasn't even thorns, it was spikes coming out of it.
Oh, so that's tough to handle.
Yeah, that was brutal. Did not like that one at all. But yeah, thank you.
Trustee Seacall.
Just the agenda, thanks.
Okay.
I'll keep it short.
We got to Megan?
Sure, I'm going to follow up on two of the comments that were made from the trustees at the end of the table. In regards to the Ghost Walk volunteering, I've done it myself in the past, and I just have to say, it's a fun way to see the event for free, and literally all you have to do is know the path, and you just take a group of participants around. So you get to participate in the event without having to pay for it. So why not volunteer?
I've worked as a guide multiple times myself, but it's fun.
You get a free companion ticket.
And you can bring a friend.
That's right.
Thanks for that. Yep. And then, talking about the trail, I don't know if Chuck wants to mention it now, or in your comments, the new viewing station, is there a date for that coming online?
Actually, they're going to have, do you remember what the date is that they're going to, they're going to do the opening for the...
October 22nd.
Okay.
Then come here, yeah.
Okay, and we had to make some changes down there, cut the fence down and put some concrete work down. It came out great, and everything's ready. We're going to wait till they have their opening, and then we'll put the binoculars on there so that people can view it. It came out really nice down there, so...
Yeah, so just so everyone in the, and the public knows, we, the Rotary?
Rotary is putting in two sets of binoculars for viewing eagles and Osprey and hunters.
You can use to...
And there'll be an interpretive sign to help you identify what you're looking at.
Yeah, so...
And that's already going our part.
So end of the month, it'll be up there. But that's right along that trail as well.
Along those lines, could you, Rotary said they would pay for materials.
Yes.
So if you've got...
We have a list.
Okay, very good. If you get it to them and...
So we do some different things, and we'll cut a great check. The fencing's a problem, because we can't cut it down. You can't get bars for that fence anymore, and the fence was too high for the binoculars. So actually, Mark Sacks, one of our guys, he's fantastic with fencing. And the guy who went down the board of concrete, and he put some Janelink fence in, black, looks really nice, cut it down lower so you can see over it, wheelchairs can get into it.
One of those sets of binoculars is ADA accessible.
Correct.
Or little kid accessible. Either way you want.
It's going to look nicer, the binoculars are nice, too. They did a good job of it.
I think that's all I have, unless either of these two gentlemen say something that I want to follow up on.
My turn.
I wasn't going to say anything. We mentioned I had eaten dinner, so we mentioned BG1, I saw their new fall brunch menu on Facebook today, I'm looking forward to that. The second thing would be, and I don't mean to put you in a spot, where do we stand with the speed leaders?
Are you talking to me?
You don't, yeah.
Oh, I don't, I don't know anything about, we have them.
Chuck and I spoke at the last meeting, and I think we're going to be coordinating with Terran on, and things on, that's going on.
No, here, actually, they're in the garage, I don't know, anything we would program, I guess there are some poles or, I don't know much about where...
I'm going to go up there with them and open up the hall.
Yep, that's fine.
I didn't want anybody to be surprised like I was when I saw the one on Tappan Street there.
Would you come on now?
Well, no, the town, right, I talked to...
We found out, Chuck knows.
The town had, the town bought one set of them, and they're moving them from spot to spot.
Oh, okay, it looked like they were permanently attached.
Yeah. Well, they could be back in that spot that Chuck said. If they locked a post...
Right. But they're going to have one, and they're going to move it to wherever they want.
I think maybe somebody just took issue with it and removed it.
That's all I have.
They're going too fast, I think.
Okay. Now we're back to trustee...
Okay, so what I was looking at was how wide a wheelchair is, and a standard wheelchair is two feet, one inch. A motorized wheelchair is, the width is three feet, four inches, so just food for thought as we're thinking through that problem.
And when you're considering the width of a manual wheelchair, also their hands are a bit...
Exactly. You have to consider all that as well. That's just the size of the actual device itself.
Well, I would think that we would also need to consider the width of our tractor that we used to water plants. That's going to get through there.
He can't get through there now.
No.
He has weapons.
So I mean, that, that might be even more than the 40 inches.
Oh, that's probably...
That's all of four feet. I mean, before you fix the problem, that might as well fix it right.
That's going to eliminate.
Yeah, I don't need the tractor necessary to get through there, as much as I need to be able, someone with a disability to get through there personally, but...
We also need to put a planter right there, so the watering guy can bypass that.
So that's where you're going to take the tariff, right, yeah. I'll stick to the agenda, though, for the rest of it.
And other than helping everyone out in the villages and enjoying the amazing weather we've been having, and hopefully we continue this trend for a little longer, and that everybody gets out, enjoys it, and gets their leaves and brush out onto the appropriate location so DPW can haul it away before snow does arrive.
But not in the roadway.
I'm not going there anymore.
I am.
You say it every year, and that's today when it gets much colder.
Get there.
Okay. Other than that, I'm going to stick to the agenda.
I think... Cut out for the date when the DPW is starting to make their brush, or is it just when...
When it snows.
When it snows.
Okay.
Snow flies.
I'm trying to see if it snows, and then we'll go back again.
Okay. I had some brush that I need to work on.
Remind you, throughout the work session, were you going to remind?
They had anything to this or not?
These there, we weren't going to do the...
Okay. Yeah, no.
So let's move on to our attorney.
Just one thing, I had mentioned at the last board meeting that the zoning board was looking at changes in the code, and they did come up with some suggestions about unsafe dwellings and unsafe buildings. And I did give to Jody, and she passed out to everybody the language that they wanted to insert, and basically about either vacant or unoccupied dwellings or business, buildings that were not secure, so that there would, either animals, vagrants, whatever, could be going in and out of those buildings, so that they weren't, it wasn't structurally unsafe, but it was unsafe because they were unsecure and unoccupied. So I didn't, I don't want to put that on the agenda, but I just want to let everybody take a look at it, and we can discuss that at the next meeting.
Does this have to have a public hearing?
Yes.
Should we go ahead and schedule that?
We could, yes.
We already have one public hearing for next, the next time too, so...
Is there time enough to get it out?
He would have to put in the post standard, yep.
I can do that.
Bob, was there something I meant to ask you, you know, when we referred to VFW property proposal to planning board for the rent on the design, and instead, it came back with a recommendation not to change the zoning to B1, which would put a total kibosh on the acquisition of property?
Yeah, I think, and again, I think they wanted to take a look at that, not, I think their concern, and again, I don't know this firsthand...
The concern that B1 has some things that they don't think should be...
Well, it's not so much that, it's just that, because ownership changes hands, if we change to B1, and then the people that are in there with the bocce courts or whatever they want to do, pickleball, whatever goes in there now, and they decide to leave, now all of a sudden you're opened up for any type of business to go in there. And so my thought was that if we want to allow this to go in, and we want this, because it's very close to residential districts, and...
It's in residential district.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, well, residential uses, so it might not be a bad idea if we want to do that. I do agree that changing the use of that parcel is important. Perhaps create a planned development district with specific rules that limit it to the type of activity that would take place with the bocce court or whatever, so there could be only athletic and, you know, community athletic activities that could go on there.
Does a zoning, if it went to ZDA and a zoning variance was granted, does that stay, does that have the same problem if they sell it? Does the variance go with the property?
The variance goes with the land. So now, if they wanted to use variance...
So they're not...
No, if they wanted to use variance, and they got a variance to go to B1, or have business use, first of all, it's a very difficult variance to get, a use variance, because you've got to come in with what they call dollars and cents proof. You have to have expert testimony. That's why, that's when a zoning board of appeals turns into a trial court. And you have to have evidence that you cannot economically use the property where it is, and if it's in an R1 district, they'd have to show the cost of tearing down the building and making it into separate lots, and, you know, so you can't use it for R1. Well, can you use it for R2? Can you use it for this? And so, that's why, they could do that, but it would be very difficult for them to do. And I'm thinking that in order to have the village accomplish what we want to do, perhaps a planned development district would be the best way to go after it.
Okay, I haven't heard anything from the developer recently, other than he keeps asking us for ass-built plans for when some addition was put on, 1995. We don't know where they're going to be. Okay, thank you. Moving on to our village clerk.
I will stick to the agenda, thank you.
You're not the treasurer, so I guess you'll be the senior citizen court.
Just a couple of upcoming events for us. We're doing our Halloween party on October 30th. We'll be having music by George Leah, and they'll be having a nice little party from 1:00 to 3:00 that afternoon. And the craft ladies will be having a craft sale in November, the 22nd and the 23rd, from 10:00 to 3:00. And then again, our annual reed sale will be coming up. I don't have the details yet on that, I'm waiting for them to get me that, but we would appreciate everyone to support us for that. That's another big fundraiser for us. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay, I'm not going to fill in for the treasurer, but did everybody get the updated abstract?
Yes.
I did have a question about it. I can ask questions at other times. So we'll move on to our superintendent of DPW.
We're getting into the end of the year now, I mean, the weather's been great for the last two, three weeks, so you wouldn't really know. All the flowers are still doing great out there. We're going to be, we're taking them down soon. We just, we're into, our mechanic's into, you know, the seams early also, but he's putting almost all his time into plow trucks. Get the plow trucks right now, we just sorted our salt, so we get a full bit of salt, ready for that. Parks, parks all look great, and, you know, until the weather changes, we'll keep them open. As soon as they change, we'll pull, you know, we'll pull the bathrooms down, and we'll get the kayak launches out. Currently, fishermen out there, or families that like to see any of the fish, and they have a carp tournament going on now, and if you walk down there, the people, and the guys and the women, they're more than happy to tell you what they're doing, and it's really pretty cool. They have alarms on their fishing poles, and they actually feed the fish all the time they're there. Someone have a lot of money, and one guy told me today, he had $100,000, and they're, some, maybe not $100,000, he had a lot of money, he was set up, and it's pretty cool just to walk down there and see them, you know, and they're all, they're all really nice, and they're happy to talk to somebody, because they're stuck in a tent for 70 hours. But that, that's gone really well. The water department, they were, they've been able, it's been such good weather, we're watching, actually, we're getting to cleaning the water tanks, and it's something that we don't get to a lot. They got the 31 tank on, it looks fantastic. And, I mean, it sounds trivial, I had a gentleman from Royal Water... sounds trivial, I had a gentleman from Rural Water, it's the Water Association, he's the CEO for the state there, and he was driving through town today, he stopped, and I was telling him about it, and he went up and looked at it, and he was just, he just couldn't believe it. We went over to the water department first day, we showed them the upgrades, and we had the electrical, and couldn't believe how clean the place was, and how well that went, and then we went up to the tanks, he says, very few municipalities get the time to clean the tanks, and he said, I just, he took pictures of it, and he goes, I just can't believe how well this looks, and.
That's the outside of the tank.
The outside of the tank, yeah, yeah, and we'll get into the inside in the next year or so, but the outside, it just looks like crap, and our tanks are in neighborhoods now, you know, and just to see the differences, like day and night, it looks like a brand-new tank in there, they get cleaned up on that. The highway, we just finished up today, the grant for Mercer Park, we got the schoolhouse painted, we got the blacktop from Kent Street to Downer Street put in, the highway built the handicap picnic tables, and they just poured the concrete pads today, they did all this in-house, and we gotta get some mulch done, that grant will be done. This grant's done here, finally, we had so much trouble getting somebody to do the installation, that's done, so that'll be closed out, those two grants should be closed out very soon. We're still struggling with our security, I would love to see that done before I go, but we're making little steps, and if we did get some work done.
You might have stale spring.
Yeah, I know, but it'll be a great system once again, and hopefully that'll go, so. Other than that, unless you have questions, we're good.
Move on to the chief.
Thank you. Obviously Monday, we had an incident at Baker High School that impacted the entire campus over there. Individual had entered into the school at dismissal time, when students were leaving, this person came in, and, you know, at first blush, they would very likely pass as a student, unless you got up close to them or had some conversation with them, but good work by our staff and the coordination with the school staff, myself and the superintendent, we set up a command post at the district office to coordinate the response, through some video we wrote to determine that the person had left the campus, but the high school had gone into lockdown, and Eldon and Dirkie had gone into lockout, so there's some certain procedures that we follow once some, once a building has gone into lockdown, that requires us to kinda go block by block, room by room, to clear that building, so that obviously is gonna take some time, you always wanna ensure that no one else is there, can't just rely on, or just see on video, because it doesn't cover everything. And then myself and lieutenant had a debrief with the school staff and his team to go over things that went well, and things that maybe we could improve upon, communication with the school community as well as the community at large, also the response from our side, we'll be getting input from those that were there over the next few days to debrief as well, so all in all, I thought the coordination with the school team was excellent. I'm gonna go to the school board meeting Monday, in case there's questions by the board that the superintendent can't answer, and I'll certainly answer any questions that this board has, but all in all, I thought the coordination between us, there were sheriff's deputies there, state troopers, you know, was a, was a pretty varied response, because initially we didn't know what we had, but then once we were able to determine that if you've been up to Baker High School recently, you know the size of that building, and how long it's gonna take you to go room by room to ensure, you know, that if people are there, we then move them to another place in the building, so that took a while, and then we had to get the Eldon students that were still there dismissed, and load them out the buses, which took some period of time, and I know there were some parents frustrated at things, but all in all, the priority at that type of event is the safety and security of the students and the staff that are there, and I think we did a good job of ensuring that, and then if it takes a while, it takes a while, but that's where we're at. I don't know if there's any questions. Other than that, that's all I have, unless there's questions, and I'll stick to the agenda here.
Was there any overtime costs associated with that, or, and how does that get divvied up, that cost?
That, that's, to answer your question, yes, there was overtime, and B, that's not getting, at least it wasn't my plan to build, forward that to the clerk's office to build the school district, that is.
Part of the operation.
Yeah, that's our, our response to an emergency event, whether that occurred at 220, or it occurred at some other business in the village, we wouldn't charge them for something like that, we wouldn't let our staff leave if it was, you know, if this occurred at another large location within.
The only, the only thing I'm thinking about, though, is like, that's a village taxpayer expense, but this is a school district expense, in essence, protecting all students from the town of Van Buren, the town of Lysander, outlying towns, so I would question if the village taxpayers should really be taking on that full brunt of that additional cost for certainly want the overtime.
I would defer to the board.
We need to go room to room down.
I'll certainly do, and Jody will, whatever this board directs us to, so that's really a decision by this board to make.
We would protect somebody from Pennsylvania if they were at the Gino and Joe's and something happened there, so if your jurisdiction had been, the school being in our area would have you covered, and I think the only way that we can recoup any of the money that you're looking to do is through prosecution and restitution, that's it, and other than that, I don't think that we'd have any likelihood, and I don't have any right to ask for something that's really within our description.
And this individual was arrested for criminal trespass, and this individual's been notified by the district, they're not allowed on the campus or in any, well, school district building, and it's my understanding that the following day, he called all the schools in the district to apologize for creating the nuisance, as it were, for what that's worth, but, and then we'll let the, you know, the process play out in village court, the DA's office, so that's where we're at, with that.
So to follow up on it a little bit on there, the SROs that were on duty, if they went into overtime, does that come out of the school, or somehow does that come back onto you, or you don't know?
I really hadn't made that decision yet, obviously anytime there's an athletic event and they request us, or there's a meeting where they request our SROs to be at, our SROs are there, I view this as an emergency situation, and whether this occurred there, or if it occurred to your point at Gino and Joe's, or any other business in our village where we had some sort of standoff or something, we've never circled back and charged that particular establishment for those emergency service fees. I view that as, is our responsibility to the community as a whole, and those individuals are certainly in our community during the daytime. The following day, we had a large presence on campus in the morning, obviously, a number of us came in at 6:30, and I was just amazed at the amount of traffic, I was telling the mayor the other day, that entered that campus, and at some point, I'm gonna assign a couple peoples there from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM with a counter or the clicker in their hand, just to count the number of cars and vehicles that come onto campus every morning, it was kind of astounding to me to see that traffic, and I mean, I knew it, but I'm not up there every morning starting at 6:30 like I was on Tuesday, and to see the amount of traffic coming on, I'm not sure what we could do better or differently, but maybe there's something to alleviate some of that congestion, we'll see.
I would just consider recouping some cost from the school district that can afford to spread that around, that the village shouldn't have to take on that total expense our own. This is, you know, this is a big school district, and there's no need for us to be, the Gino and Joe situation is totally different, but this is happening on the district property, and certainly we've gotta go there and protect that, but how that is paid is a different factor. Not to debate.
I don't believe that the state police or the sheriff's office are.
Were they there also?
Yeah, are sending them a bill, just so you're aware.
That's fine.
There were, yeah, this board can choose to do whatever, choose to do, just for making informed decisions.
And not to debate the issue any further necessarily, the SROs are paid by Greater Baldensville, they're not paid by the village, so taxpayer dollars from Greater Baldensville that go to the school district essentially pay the SROs.
That's correct, yes.
Yes, that's not an expense that just the village is taking out, they're over at all this film, that money's coming from Madison, it's coming, the screen, it's coming from all over.
Which helps plant that seed in my brain that some of that money should also be coming in these situations for that as well, especially if it's SRO overtime in that situation. That I don't disagree with.
Thanks, Chief. We're gonna go on to pending business, then new business, and if someone wishes to make a motion or pose action at that point in time, we can address it. So pending business is the standing food truck issue that I believe will just stay where it is. Is there some objection?
Can we discuss it?
Sure, discuss away.
I had discussions with two separate food truck operators, and they were both very much in favor of the invite-only approach that you had mentioned, and for what it's worth, they were, they didn't, they didn't, it was gonna infringe on their ability to come to Baldensville, they've been asked numerous times, so it could be a really good fix.
See, I don't really think our community deals with freelance food truck operators, I mean, you see those Skippy's ice cream truck drive around anymore.
Well, they go to my neighborhood all the time.
Really?
So I never have any change in the change charge.
But I know some places, if we still had Moore's Machine Works here, we probably would have food trucks for their lunch break, when, you know, someone would roll in and try it, so. Remember the one that was down where Fern Derry is now? There was somebody early on in the food truck.
Oh, yeah, a barbecue place.
Yeah, some barbecue place would show up, never had anything to eat there.
We have one at work every other week, but again, it's invite-only, they're not just showing up, the invite part is the game.
I'll talk to a couple over at Amazon this week, just see what their, what their.
Do they have randoms come in there?
They have about six or seven food trucks, and actually they have, I think Salt City Smokehouse comes in with like the big smoker in the back. I would imagine so, because Amazon wants to control everything over there, so.
Plus that's private property, so, unless they were setting up on the roadside right across from the Amazon property, which I think it's more what we're talking about would be someone just coming and parking in Balden Canal Square.
So if we wanted to go that route, then we would need to go into local law 242, the second particle, and modify that, take out some of the language that's in there, although gotta remember 242 is also dealing with solicitors and peddlers, and we do wanna regulate them, at least I do, I can have so many people knocking on my door this year.
I'll bring that back, wait, I'm gonna be talking to the zoning board about that.
Okay, very good, thank you. New business.
Hold on, we need them.
We need them.
Motion to table.
Motion to table. Okay, okay. In the seconds.
Second.
Favor. I opposed.
A.
New business, motion authorized the police department to purchase in-car cameras, license plate readers, and body cameras from Motorola Solutions that are costing $100,756.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
For discussion, can we just note that it's, that what did you say, 91,000 is coming from a grant?
With a $45,000 discount.
Yes.
Good for the next five years, roughly.
Yes, it'd be a five-year contract.
Thanks.
And then the five years, what happens to the equipment? You have to give it back?
No, we actually own that equipment then, so if that equipment is usable, we can continue to use it, but the body cameras will certainly be.
Technology will move on.
Yeah, more than likely, but if they're still operational, you know, they can still be serviceable, so.
Okay.
And we'll be moving away from a server to cloud-based storage for that data, which is much easier to manage and maintain and things.
Did you have a $45,000 coupon, or did you?
I was trying to negotiate it down for some time.
Clipper magazine? Looking at America, I can see it all couponed.
Without any further discussion, all in favor?
Sorry, sorry, sir.
Sorry, sir.
Opposed. Carry. Could I have a motion adopting the policy and procedures for usage of video conferencing for all board meetings of the village with the modified language that we discussed addressing work and village business?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I don't.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if Bob will work on some of that wording?
Yeah.
So do we need a motion to set this public hearing?
Yes.
Go ahead, Nate.
Make a motion to set a public hearing for the next meeting, which is the, so let's do, 17? Thanks. October 17th, 7:40?
35.
35, okay, 35. To change the provisions of Article 31 of the Code of the Village of Baldensville to modify the definition of unsafe buildings to include vacant or abandoned buildings which are not secure. I did the motion, so.
Everyone good with that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Is there any other business that we brought before the board? Hearing none, could I have a motion that pay bills is up?
I love it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at?
8:17.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you.